Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for making yourselves available for this special amenities committee meeting. It's Tuesday, the 15th of November. Start with agenda item 487, as usual. Are there any declarations of any disposable pecuniary interests from anyone, please? No, thank you. And I'm aware of some apologies, Karen.
Spiritum, rain, thunder and white.
Very much. Pretty much everyone else is here. So 489, bus station toilets were being asked to consider the bus station contract and to make a recommendation to the finance committee as to whether or not the council should consider terminating the contract, the contract being for opening and closing and the cleaning of the bus station toilets. We had a brief discussion about this at the amenities committee meeting a few weeks ago, and it would be useful to get a decision from the committee as to whether or not we do want to break the contract and to effectively walk away and pass that on to Norfolk County Council. Does anyone want to speak at this?
Just walk away, will Norfolk County Council do this thing?
I've been contacted as a Norfolk County councillor and they've made very clear to me in an email that they don't provide any toilet facilities at bus stations in the whole of Norfolk, including at Norwich, which I wasn't aware of. And they have said that if the town council were to walk away, they wouldn't be able to step in and they have said in an email that the bus station toilets would close as a result.
But there's also no option to go to them for any funding either.
Well, we can always, that's always an option to ask formally. And I have sort of intimated to them that they might want to consider making a contribution, but they may be nervous of that because it will set a precedent for other toilets. But that doesn't mean we can't ask. Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. I think my starting point would be whether we need the toilets or not. And my own answer is yes, we do. So if we break a contract, it seems to me at the very least what we should do is have a plan B. So what would be the alternatives to try and keep the toilets available at least during the hours they're currently available? Although, of course, buses run outside those hours and it can be very tiresome. So that would be one thinking, that we really ought to be looking at whether there are other practical alternatives, whether we put it out to tender, whether we consider bringing it in-house. I think historically, we've always in the past looked at certain types of activities and thought, this is not a good thing to have in-house. An example would be grave digging. It takes one or more of a team away from their normal work at short notice. Locking, unlocking the toilets, cleaning the toilets, all right, that's more routine, but we would probably need to look at more staff. I think we need to keep an open mind, but the suggestion is that we would try and continue to outsource it. So my hope is that what we'll end up doing is saying, we've got an unsatisfactory situation, Norfolk won't bail us out, we need to be clear what the alternatives are and go for one of those. If it means advertising, for example, for putting a tender out, then that's what we should do.
Okay. Thank you. Barbara?
I'm of the opinion if you don't ask the question, you know, why not? I mean, we do need a plan B, but you know, it just seems strange that somebody provides toilets and then doesn't put in place the system to maintain them. And I don't know how it ended up being at the town council because I wasn't here at the time, but is there an actual contract in place where there is? Is there a?
Yes, there is. I mean, I think, I assume that would be possible to circulate. That'd be quite useful. It is a good document to read. I have had a good look at it. So we can get that circulated, but it's between us and Norfolk County Council.
Which just says that we, you know, we just clean them for nothing really, basically, for their facility. So, you know, maybe a letter just to say that, yeah, we're looking at the whole of the toilet situation in Fethford as a whole and, you know, that might have to be seized.
The, just before I bring Dave in, just for historical context, the bus station and all the other toilets were originally provided by Breckland. All public toilets in the whole of the district were provided by Breckland. And then all three toilets in Fethford were transferred to the town council. So it's only really Norfolk County Council's involvement since the bus station upgrade. And because there was an existing toilet block, they built a new one into the new toilets and into the new bus station.
So the old toilet block in the old bus station?
Yeah.
It was responsible for Breckland.
Yeah.
Norfolk County Council built a new one.
Yeah, it's just, exactly. And there's always one direction to us, I'm afraid. So, but both of the, both of those authorities have essentially provided the toilet block, but not the consumables and the opening and closing and cleaning. That's essentially what they're doing. Okay. Dave, please.
Yeah. My question was really about the historical context and you've mentioned a bit of it. I mean, like Barbara, I was on council when that agreement was set in place with Norfolk County Council. But there must, there's got to be a bit of a backstory there somewhere about why, why would we have agreed to do it? I mean, we must have seen it as a benefit. And if we saw it as a benefit then, what has changed? And do we not see it as a benefit now? I mean, I see it as a benefit of those toilets there. And if, if we were starting from now and we were talking to Norfolk County Council, we might make, you know, different, we might say different things to them and try not to get into a situation where we were picking up the bill for the toilets. But I think where we are now, we've made an agreement in the past and I think it would be a shame if we broke that agreement. It's going to cost us money, but providing toilets in other areas over town costs us money as well. And so, you know, on balance, I think we should continue to provide those toilets. We can reduce the costs in some way.
Good. Yep. Susie, did you want to comment, then one that hasn't spoken?
Yeah, I wasn't at the previous meeting, but the companies that have quoted, what does that actually for? Does that provide someone in the toilets to, you know, supervise them or some to come in twice a day and clean them up?
I don't think we're looking for that.
No, so, yeah, I mean, they are interlinked, obviously, but we, we will explain that, I think, when we get to the toilet cleaning contract agenda item. This is specifically the principle of whether or not we continue to pick up the bill for the bus station toilet provision is the first, because obviously, we need to know if the council has a willingness to continue to provide the toilets at the bus station, because we need to know whether to include it in the contract or include the cost of the staff for it.
I agree with what Dave said, that I think if it was decided that was advantageous previously, then I can't see that's changed. I mean, a lot of people travel from Fethford or through Fethford, don't they? And, you know, it's a service to provide for travelers.
The one thing I did think about, I don't know if Nick, these prices have been circulated with others. Brilliant. So we had a conversation last month, well, last meeting, about whether there were opportunities for automation, because in some public loo's nowadays, they have a lock system that automatically unlocks in the morning. One of the reasons it's costly is because somebody has to lock it at night and then unlock it again in the morning, when presumably it's already clean, because you clean it at the end of the day. So we looked at automatic locking. Now, I know that Norfolk County Council has just received a significant amount of money for bus station, bus improvements in Norfolk. I mentioned it at full council. And some of that money is to improve bus facilities, particularly shelters and waiting areas and that sort of thing. And I think we'd have quite an argument to go to them and say, well, we think you should be upgrading the toilet block to include a level of automation with this money, because it's capital money. Because it's all very well having fancy signs and notice boards and seats, but frankly, a bigger issue for people in Fethford will be if they can go to the loon. So if there was some money available for Fethford, if they could upgrade toilet block to, because I'm looking at these prices and slightly nervous. But we could do that one as a test, maybe, I'm thinking about the automation and see if we can get them to pay for it, because that would reduce our running costs significantly at level of automation. So we've got the one idea of asking them formally for some money. No harm in asking. And then secondly, to ask if they might use some of the bus service improvement plan money to help with the capital cost of improving the locking procedure. Yeah. Um. Decision required to formulate a recommendation to finance committee. So what would the committee like our recommendation to be to the finance committee?
I think your suggestion is an excellent one and that perhaps could be the starting point, could it? Whether we then want to say, I'm filling that, something else, but maybe we just do it one step at a time and say, this, this is a possible way forward. It doesn't require Norfolk to commit to cleaning the toilets, but we want to ensure the money pays.
Okay.
I would agree. Explore all options. George, George, so?
Yeah.
The president's side, please.
Would one of you like to propose that? Chris? Anna Sevender? Thank you, Susie. All in favour? Brilliant. I'm hoping, Karen, you got the wording of that recommendation. It was a big, we got them. We know what we want, kind of. But let's move that one forward, which is good. So agreement in principle to keeping the toilets open, subject to asking for Norfolk for some money and possible upgrade to the toilet block. So the second part, which is linked, is the actual cleaning contract for all three toilet blocks, so that's Cage Lane, Castle Park and the bus station. And we're being asked to consider and discuss the various options available to the council in respect of its toilet cleaning and key holding contract. And Alan and Nick have finally been doing some research and circulated an options paper for us. Did you want to talk us through the three options that we've got available?
Sure. I think what we did as we looked at the three, three options, the first one really was looking at appointing an outsourced contractor. We've had significant challenges with our existing contractor. It's had huge implications to the, to members of the public. It's had huge implications to our staff members, because they, the fallback, poor Nick can be going somewhere and he has to get called back to open toilets or closed toilets or whatever the case may be. What we did is we had a look at that. We haven't done a definitive tendering process, because you wouldn't want to do that, because, you know, Mr. Dyer's passed. But Nick did get on the telephone and spoke to two suppliers. And you can see at the moment, we're paying 2316, excluding VAT, to our current contractor. We looked at two companies, company one, they quoted us £4,850 and company two, £5,100. And what we've done is, in the option papers, we've just looked at the advantages and the disadvantages of, of that type of service. In doing that analysis, we've really looked at Nick's position, because I think what we've got to be very careful of is what is, you know, Nick has to write to people, Nick has to do, you know, ensure that there's backup, et cetera. So that has influenced a little bit of our advantages and disadvantages, but you can just see, you know, we don't have to manage, if we go for an outsourced model, we don't have to manage the service outsourced, less burden on TTC staff. We, the responsibility of resourcing is the contractor, although you wouldn't think that at times. We can build in penalty clauses for non-performance and that's, I think, is fundamental. There's no need to purchase cleaning materials or equipment, because if they're responsible for a level of service, they have to use the material for, they have to do that. And we have no commitment to any minimum hours or whatever the case may be. The disadvantages, and this is one of the disadvantages that we're facing now, is that we have, it's very difficult to change or modify the contract, because you sign a contract for a period of time. So if you want to remove, like we've removed, for example, the priory opening and closing, it's very difficult to see that in a particular contract, so you don't have that. And it is a very high monthly cost, particularly the current contractors are not that expensive, but the new contractors would be. The second option that we had a look at was to appoint agency staffs. And what we believe would go to, would go to an agency and would say, could you provide two staff members and let them work out a rotor? We've got a decade of pricing of £14.95 per hour. And again, I've set out the advantages and disadvantages in the paper. The advantages, less burden on TTC staffs from a rotating perspective, resourcing, responsibility of the agency, there's no added costs. We can build, again, we can build in penalty clauses for non-attendance. We have the flexibility to change responsibilities and hours as and when needed. And overall, our costs are much lower than an outsourced model. The disadvantage is that Nick would still have to set out a work programme, we still have to do some oversight and we'd have to fund the cleaning materials. The third option was to look at an in-house model. Some of the calculations, I seem to come up with a different amount, but I have come up with, you're taking the new salaries. We actually could take a final as last week, so at least we have extra numbers. And the hourly rate is about £14.50, that would be all the added employment costs. The advantage is that staff can be used as and when required and it is the lowest direct cost. The disadvantage is that we'll need to cover for annual leave and sickness. And an existing staff member may also need to be on standby over the weekends, because if someone is sick and it was their responsibility, someone actually has to do that. So that adds costs. They'll need to be managed on a rotor and supervised by the TTC staff. We have no management duty over the weekend, so that, that's a little bit of a concern. And when we had it previously, that did come out as one of the issues. And we have to fund our cleaning materials. So that's really what we've come up with in terms of the options analysis. I think it's just, again, we've had a little bit of a bias looking at Nick's position, because I think he's borne the burden of the poor performance so far and we really want to protect him going forward, because he's got the highest, you know, untaken leave amongst all the staff, because he hasn't had the opportunity to take his leave over the last year or so. And I'll leave it there.
Okay. Thank you. That's really useful. So you've had the paper and you've had Alan's overview. Does anyone have any questions or wants anything clarified on what's been presented? Dave, please.
Yeah, you've given, for the first one, we've got a monthly cost. And for the, the second two options, we've got an hourly cost. Can we have a rough indicative of what a monthly cost would be on that?
We worked out yesterday that it would be about four and a half hours per day maximum. That would be for one person, opening, closing, and that would include cemetery and King's House, although that cost would be recovered in different ways, and for doing the cleaning. So that, that would be four and a half hours. So it would, if we use staff as, on a minimum basis, it would be the same calculation. My mental check is not that great, but it would be thirty.
Do the maths for us.
About £1,300. £1,350, somewhere around there.
Those are considerably cheaper than the contract price.
That would be, the agency would be slightly more expensive than that, but we would have to pay standby or, or have to cover annual leave.
But we'd also have to pay cleaning materials.
We'd have to pay the cleaning materials in that case.
That's all. Because I'm just trying to get at.
We're looking at about fifty, we did rest of it, it's about £50 per month.
Yeah.
Per, per facility.
Right, so it's still not mapped here.
It would be £150.
Three are considerably cheaper than option, than option one.
Yeah.
But there are other issues in terms of management and things like that. Because you're already talking about the direct costs on those two. Okay.
Chris?
Well, it's always been have in-house staff. It has to a day one. I don't like outsourcing, I don't like prime down staff, et cetera. We've seen the results of what's happened when we've outsourced. We've had major issues on most of the sites regarding outsourcing. The agencies are really, but sometimes you never get the same staff two times running. Twice running, that's not good, Graham. Same staff twice running, so you don't get this, this flow. So that, I must admit, my feeling is in that's annoying. Although, I think more, I said a more word. Sorry.
Thank you.
My view is the reason we're looking at this is because the contractor employs direct staff and when they don't show, it causes issues. So I don't know how we, if we had in-house staff and we had the same issues, it's not resolving the problem, because if something went off long-term sick, you then got a shortfall. But agency have got a bigger pool of people and if they can't provide the regular person, they would then look on their resources to put somebody else in post. Whereas, you know, if we have some, a member of staff that's not showing, the only thing is still on Nick to do it. So I don't see what we would gain from having in-house staff. And also there'd be more, an extra cost on, on Nick's time. You know, agency staff is, is what it is. You know, you may not get the same person, but it'd be their responsibility to send a, a competent person to clean and, and open the toilets. I don't know, you know, if you, if you have somebody, you know, need a carer, you could get this different person every day of the week. So as, as long as they do the job, it's, it could be worth looking at.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Dave?
Again, I think the, the fundamental problem that we've got now is because people don't turn up and the jobs don't get done. So looking at these three options, I mean, obviously with the contract one, you know, we know what happens in a, in a contract, if you've got a number of people who don't turn up. We find out from the members of the public after the issue and it's very embarrassing, very difficult. And we're not serving the, the public. Agency staff, would we have a similar thing? Would the agency staff not turn up? Would the agency know that they've not turned up? Would we be telling them, your person hasn't turned up, but sort of four hours after the event and the toilets haven't been open all morning? I, I think the only one that gives you a little bit, I mean, I, obviously it depends on who you employ. If you employ someone reliable, then you get what you deserve, I suppose. But when, when you're actually employing your own staff, you tend, they tend to let you know if they're going to be off sick and it's not going to happen. And, and, I mean, I know that that option three is going to be a lot cheaper than option one, but we, we need to also build in, I mean, it says no management oversight on the weekends, so that, there needs to be some, something in place, so that if someone is off sick or something, they've got someone to refer to and something can be put in place. But that, so we need to think about those sorts of things when we're looking at what we, what we decide to do. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure if option two, agency staff resolves the issue. I mean, I suppose what resolves issue is if you have a contractor that's, that's reliable, but you can't guarantee that, can you?
If I can comment, again, I have to be very careful, I don't need the committee. I mean, we've, in the last three years, we've, we've had the situation, we had an in-house. One of the big things that we found against that was that we were paying significant amounts of extra hours. So the two staff members involved, the one went to leave, they would be significantly on higher, higher costs. And there was a little bit of a problem of, of absenteeism or just stepped out. So, so that was the analysis and that, I think that was one of the reasons, I wasn't around those days while we looked at it. Prior to Covid, we had a, we had a two, we had a mixed model. We had a contractor coming in to do the, to actually do the toilet cleaning. That was a local company and they, but we were doing, you know, I think two or three cleaning regimes a day, you know, during the height of Covid. And we had another, we had a contractor, an agency staff model, actually opening and closing the toilets. And with all fairness, and again, I have to be careful, you know, we, the, the two contractors, the, 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 the agency staff opening and closing never let us down. I, Nick, you know, and we, the toilet cleaning people never let us down. So we've had a, you know, a whole lot of different experiences. So I just thought I'd put that out there and that's what is the reason why we rented house, well, sorry, why we moved from out of in-house to outsourced in 2020. I'll just.
Sorry, I was writing my some notes.
To be honest, if I was that contractor charging £5,000 a month, the first thing I'd do is pick up the phone and get some agency staff covering. A lot of, that's how, that's how companies work nowadays. They sub, you know.
If I could just ask for some clarification on a couple of bits. So in the third option, it says an existing member, staff member will also need to be paid to be on standby. Do we pay them when they do the work if they're covering or do we pay them literally to be on standby?
You'd pay them an element of both. Because they can't, their weekend is restricted, because they wouldn't be able to go away in the morning or the afternoon, because they'd have to be around in case something happened to the existing staff member.
Okay. Because that leads into my other point about, obviously, the benefits sitting on the cemetery committee, which is a seven-day-a-week service. So a seven-day-a-week service. And I do think it's a slightly bigger issue than what we've got here, but we do need to think as a council about what arrangements we have in place for the weekends. You know, we are not a nine-to-five, Monday to Friday organisation. You know, what if somebody dropped something really dangerous on one of our play areas on a Saturday? Who do they ring? And that's my point, is, you know, it's not, we need an agreed procedure. I've never known as a councillor who I contacted on a Saturday if I find a needle in the toilet or, I don't know, I'm, you know, I'm thinking of hypotheses, but we do need a weekend, what would describe it, management oversight. Because we're not nine-to-five. So, you know, that, I think that's a bigger issue than just the toilets, to be honest with you. And maybe it's something Personnel Committee are aware of, I don't know, on Personnel. But, you know, we do need to tighten up our arrangements, you know, think of the issues we've had with the cemetery. And then, you know, we haven't got the costs here for what the being paid to be on standby looks like, but, you know, if that's every weekend, that's a significant additional cost which we haven't, you know, factored in. I do think if we go with option three, which is to employ staff, we do need to forward plan and budget an allowance or contingency, whatever you want to call it, for annual leave and a degree of sickness. You know, we know what the annual leave entitlement is for the year ahead when we employ somebody. And I think what we've done as a council in the past is we've employed somebody, they've gone off on annual leave, we've incurred costs covering that annual leave, and then that's an additional cost. It wasn't an additional cost, they're always going to have annual leave, they're entitled to it. We need to budget to make sure, you know. So when we factor in the cost, it's not the core cost of two people, it's two people plus whatever the minimum annual leave commitment is, because we know it's going to happen. And then, you know, frankly, we'd be lucky if that member of staff doesn't have a single bit of sickness in the year. So we do need to factor in, you know, we, we have a sickness rate presumably as an organisation, so we have to factor that. And the last bit I would make is, one of the biggest, my own personal view, around employing our own staff is, I've been very impressed by how our own works team have really organised themselves over the last year to two years and really taken pride in their work and actually have, you know, started to get things together, organised, doing things proactively, not necessarily just reactionary. And I would like to see some additional people who come in, take pride in their work. They know what they're going into, because there's, the benefit of being consistent with the same people cleaning the toilets, is you know what days are going to be busier days, you know busier times, you know, you know, you can spot peaks and trends and you have that consistency and pride. So that's why I personally, as long as it wasn't hugely more expensive, be in favour of employing our own staff rather than agency. But it's, it's, well, it's down to people's own individual preference, really. But, you know, that's where I'm at. Susie?
Yeah, I just wondered with that option three, employing staff and, and existing staff members need to be paid over the weekends, presumably there would be two different payments, wouldn't there? One would be just for like being on standby and then if they got called out, they'd presumably get more. Is that how it would work?
Exactly, Adam's, you know, that's not a good answer.
Yeah.
So this would be hard to predict how much that's going to cost, wouldn't it? I mean, you'd know what, you know, for standby each weekend, how much that would cost, but you wouldn't necessarily know how many times it would be.
One would hope if it was happening too often, you would deal with the issue at source and change the member of staff, the way it should work. It can't run, but defeats the objective, somebody's having to cover all the time. Okay. Does anyone have any further questions before we move to a decision?
Well, we're talking about covering weekends. I mean, and this relates to what you were saying about it's been seven days a week in some of our activities. I mean, maybe we could recommend that the personnel on, on committee have a look at how the in-house hours work, so that there would be somebody who would always be rotated on for weekends, not, not the same person, though. But at that, we, you know, obviously, we've got staff on conditions of employment now that doesn't include that, so that might just have to be a gradual thing that's brought in. But so that's something that might be worth looking at. And picking up on a couple of things Alan said about the opening and closing and the cleaning and how we had two different contractors doing that. So that might be something we'll, we ought to consider as well. If we are not going to employ our own staff, then we have two different contracts. And I think we were also talking about doing the, well, reducing the amount of time to clean, because we, I mean, we, we unchecked considerably in Covid and we dropped it down a bit. We had, but originally we were only doing one clean a day, I think we had in two. And we were saying if we did the clean at the end of the day, then that clean would happen. happen and then locking up. And then if you had somebody else or another contractor who just opened in the morning, obviously we had the automation in that would, that could help in that as well. So that might be another thing that we ought to put into the pot and consider. And also something else Alan said about, I think Alan mentioned it anyway, about, oh, we had a local company doing the cleaning and we didn't really have that, that sort of problem. The company that we now have a contract with, I think it's New York, is it there based now or something like that?
It's actually based in Southend. The area supervisor's based in York.
Oh, yeah. So that's covering all places in the west and the middle. Right, so I mean, I think if we are going to be looking for contractors or agencies, then we ought to be looking for people very local so that we have a little bit more contact and ability to react quickly.
Yeah. Can we just check as well, Alan, I think you mentioned four and a half hours a day for the in-house option. Would we have more flexibility if we employed somebody on the sort of type of work that they did? I'm just thinking with the toilets, some days they're nice and clean and it's literally a case of, you know, refilling the toilet roll and giving it a clean over and it doesn't take that long. Some days it's a bit more of a deep do based on if, you know, whatever's happened. I'm just thinking the other benefit in terms of value for money, if we employed people direct, if we wanted to say to them, well, once you've done your standard cleaning arrangements, if you wanted to go and litter pick in the town centre, if you wanted to clean a bench down, clean a bin down, that does relieve quite a bit of pressure from your team.
Yeah. I mean, I think we indicated in the option that it would give flexibility to have to change or amend, you know, staff.
Because they'll be in the town centre anyway, they're not going to just go and sit in the toilet and wait for four and a half hours, aren't they?
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. You know, if they, if they're a proactive person, they'll get their job done and then look for what else they can do and.
Yeah.
Okay, brilliant.
Just going to sound like really quick, but it's not meant to. Nick, how would you feel now that you are in charge of the work ethic? You have extra staff.
Yeah.
So you're going to have to actually step back from your physical.
Yeah.
You know, become more and more managerial type?
It already is like that.
But you're happy?
It already is like that. I don't spend the most time out of the office as much as I'd like to nowadays because, you know, managing the team, managing the contractors, managing, there's lots going on, you know, as we're getting more and more projects coming through with buildings and stuff. We've got to oversee them, you know, we can't just rely on them to come in and do the jobs. We've got to, you know, manage those contracts, if you like. So he's very busy, yeah.
What happens when you're on holiday or what steps, who steps in?
It's been known that I've come in, yeah, so on the weekend I've still come in, yeah, because I've received the phone call. I am the point of contact, if you like, you know. So I just drop it and just cover it a bit like last Christmas, you know, it was just a case of it needed to be done, we need to operate, you know, we had an obligation to open them, so I covered it.
It's a red flag and the management structure is missing the link.
Yeah. And the thing is as well, it's for us, it's diffusing the problem before we occur one, you know, it's a bit like terrorists are coming in after a weekend, you know, it's like David said, facing the embarrassment, you know, the things haven't been covered, we've got our answer, phone calls, emails, you know, it all takes time afterwards to pick up all the bits and pieces after somebody's failed to do what they're supposed to be doing on the weekend. It's a, it's a nightmare.
Alan just comes in, Chris, no, no.
I, I think just, we have got, we have identified someone within next team. We will step up and do some of that.
Yeah.
We've actually just given them a remuneration in kind of adjustment for that. So that's, that is the term. So we are very, very aware that if Nick sneezes, gets a cold, we have to manage that. So we are aware of that.
Yeah, that's okay. Just one more, just to clarify because my head's not always right. This keyhole, did it include the cemetery?
Yes.
Yes, at the moment.
If it goes forward, it will. So therefore the money we've saved from doing that, that.
Well, the cemetery won't save anything. The money that they've got allocated to do that will go towards this role.
Right, so you need, you need someone who's quite flexible then if they've got to all these different things, haven't you?
Or very fast. But we also need, it comes, as Nick was saying, but forward planning, I think, because, you know, if you schedule your toilets to open at the same time as the cemetery, it's not going to happen, is it? You can't get three toilets and then the cemetery's here, you know.
I just, I just think, having done that, I used to do out of hours work for social care when I was a social worker, but when you did out of hours work, you know, I was a child protection social worker, but in your out of hours, you had to deal with old people, mental health, everything. So you had to be, you know, pretty flexible. I know it's not quite as good, hopefully, as difficult as that doing that, but you need someone who's quite adaptable, don't you, to be able to skip from cemeteries to cleaning the loos, you know, whatever, you know.
That's kind of what's been happening at the moment, but not terribly well. Okay, so we've had a good chat about it. You've got three options before you. And just to be clear on next steps, Alan, is this a recommendation to finance, a recommendation to full council?
This would go as part of your budget.
As part of our budget. So the money we're asking for in our budget paper for toilets, the 36K, effectively this recommendation would inform how that is spent, whether it's on a contract or employing somebody. So if we go for the in-house option, we're looking at a budget 36K to employ two people plus a contingency, including the consumables. Just so we're clear on this as well, just stating a preference of in-house or contractor. I'm looking to you, committee members, for one of you to make a proposal on which option you would like.
Option three, please.
Is there a second for option three? And Dave? Can I have a show of hands for all in favour of option three, please? Four, thank you. Those against? Those abstaining?
I meant undecided.
Undecided. We'll put you down as an abstention, Bob.
It's difficult, it's.
Anyone's got a crystal ball?
All of them, yeah.
Okay, so if we've got our 36K approved, which will be in a few weeks' time, we can get the ball rolling on recruitment. 491, proposed amenities committee budget. So this was the original reason for our special meeting today, which was to review our draft budget for 2023/24. This will, once adopted today, go forward to full council for consideration. Thank you to Alan for pulling it together. Do you want to talk us through any highlights or significant changes? Because there's a few, a few changes.
Just to put it in context, agreed at, as agreed at the previous meeting, there was a workshop held next by South, the councillor Hodgson and councillor Dermot, all attended. We had a, we worked through, we went through the budget virtually line by line. Some amendments were made and we really just looked at some of the risks associated with the budget. From an income perspective, we need to look at some of the section 106 monies. I haven't had a chance to do that since we had our workshop, but that's one of the things we need to look at. And then we, the other's income side was to look at, potentially look at donations for some of the hanging baskets and whether there were some opportunities there. So there's, is some income generation ideas that came out, but we can't put those into the budget because, you know, it would be silly of us to do that because there's such high risk and no probability at the moment. In terms of the costs, we're happy with our street furniture. We've, we've increased our floor displays money, there's been some adjustments there. We've looked at playparks, there's obviously a big challenge to us going forward, but we haven't made any significant changes there. Open spaces management, we haven't made too many changes there. I think the figures that have come out are fairly robust. We have incorporated the higher costs that our contractor has proposed, so all those are included in this budget. We're going to have a special amenities meeting in December just to discuss the proposal by the contractor to decide whether to accept it or look at alternatives. In terms of the tree surveying, one of the tasks that we have as a management team is we have to go away and just have a look at, are we doing it, you know, are we optimising that cost? Is it, you know, are we, are we doing our surveying too frequent? And straight after that meeting, I know Nick has gone away and fired us some emails to our contractors, so we're just hoping to, hoping to get a response from that. Again, we haven't changed it, that remains the same. And then the rest of it really is, there hasn't been that significant amount of change. So we've come out with a budget of £196,000 in terms of expenditure, it is a lot higher. Most of that is attributable to the increase in the open space management contract. But what I have to just, before we go any further, what I have to sensitize the committee to, at the moment, our budget is looking at a 31% increase in preset, significant cost increases and it's unlikely, and again, I have no right to speak as a councillor, but it's unlikely that I think the council will accept that. So we have to really look at our budget going forward and look at potentially how do we soften the blow to, to set the residence. So I'm going to leave it there if I can.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Does anyone have any questions on the budget? Dave?
On the, I noticed the grants received line a few years ago is considerably more than it is now. Just wondered, but also wondered what those grants were received for. We've got, we're budgeting for receiving £30,000 in grants. I know there's highest level stewardship money, but there's only £3,500 expenditure there. Just wondered what was included in those.
Just the HLS money.
It is the HLS money.
We don't budget any section 106 money. In previous years, my understanding is of section 106.
Yeah. So that £30,000 is the HLS money, but we're not actually showing that we're spending that, are we?
It gets spent, it gets spent in our vegetation management.
Oh, okay.
And other areas, you know. So in fact, I think we have an audit shortly, Nick, if I'm correct. They contacted us yesterday, so that they'd like to do an audit of us, so.
Okay. And just one, another question, I'm assuming the net at the bottom is the amount that is funded by preset.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Presumably the hanging baskets, Anglia and Bloom and Borders should add up to the floral displays amount. Make it £21,000 rather than £20.
I clicked it on one of the other sheets, sorry. It's 21,000.
That's my bug.
Good luck spreadsheet.
In another iteration of, effectively the live council budget, I picked it up that it suggested. Thank you.
Chris?
Is there any hope of anything happening to Peas Church?
Well, one would hope with this heritage master plan that maybe there would be, but that, what we've got budgeted, seven and a half is peanuts compared to what we could have to pay on it. That's just literally keeping the lights on, I should think, and emergency, you know, lighting repairs or alarms or whatever.
Could we get another of my weird questions left?
We like your weird question.
Next year, when King Street comes into our jurisdiction, is that when you stop getting the money from you?
We have an answer. It was one of the questions that was asked in one of the workshops, that money is like, our property value indicator has increased and we think it is due to the inclusion of King's fleet.
Yes, you remain country.
And so as that is developed and solidified, it should come through, but I think it's going to be over a number of years. But there has, I think other councils have had a decrease in their property value indicator, those up, we've had an increase.
If our preset requirement's going up by 31%, what's our council tax increase? Because they're now different.
21%.
The same.
It might be a couple of less than a percent difference, but if you round it up, it's virtually the same.
Okay.
Just to comment about the tree surveying.
Yeah.
We talked to our contractors, they're likely to say, oh no, you probably need to spend more on it.
We've gone initially to our own contractors, where we are now going to other sort of councils just to see, so we can get reflection of what we're doing currently, what they're suggesting, what other people are doing. So it gives some good variation of different options and what bits to bring back to the table, yeah, definitely.
Lovely, thanks.
Yeah. So you're going. Oh, yes.
I'm sure you can.
And you probably haven't, Nick, because we only met last week, but on trees, we spoke about the need for surveys.
Yeah.
And we've budgeted £6,000 to do the surveys and £10,000 to do the actual maintenance. And I was just wondering if the surveying was perhaps overkill and we didn't have enough money for the actual maintenance.
Let's go back to what Dave said about the going out, so we've gone to the people we're using at the moment to see if we can cut it down initially and what the legal recommendations are.
Right.
We've then also gone to separate outsourced companies to see again, so we can get an idea of what other people are doing, what we're doing, what the legal requirements are. So it gives us an overall basis to look at.
No, but so that figure could potentially change.
Yeah.
If I can just also clarify, we had a contract signed with them and you'll see in 2021, 22 actual, that they're far behind. So there's quite a significant amount of £12,380. So far, they, the contract that we signed is £6,000, including that, if I remember correctly. So that's where we've got the, and we've put a £1,000 increase for the current, for the forthcoming year, because everyone's increasing their costs.
Yeah, okay. Would anyone like to request any changes, either up or down? The only one I was disappointed with, Alan, is the borders and barrels because we are being quite keen with sort of our floral displays and stuff. And I notice we are going to be spending a lot more on hanging baskets, but potentially for the same number of hanging baskets. And we've got a £1,000 new cost for our entry to Anglia and Bloom. I'm just wondering if we're not doing ourselves a disservice by not giving ourselves a decent budget for borders and barrels?
The recommendation of our workshop, there'd be taxes of the money for the Anglia and Bloom from there. So it was just following on from that workshop.
Is the committee happy that we keep it at 1,500?
I mean, it's great to do, where can we take it from?
Okay.
My financial brilliance, where will you take it?
On the finance committee. You know the answers. No?
I assume that hanging baskets increases because we're going to be putting more hanging baskets up.
No, it's the same number, it just costs more.
Costs a thousand, gone up a lot.
We do have a lot of baskets though, so we might want to triage and see which ones we don't want to put on.
Yeah. Yeah, so a heck of a lot of money.
It is, isn't it? Must be like Christmas lights, paying 18 grand to put them up.
Hanging baskets.
Seventy-nine?
It's about 116, 117, I think it is. Yeah. There's a rough bigger, but I couldn't be 100% sure without looking.
Probably worthwhile having, you know, a couple of people having a walk around and actually see which ones have the impact.
And had a chat about.
Do the, do the tubs have more of an impact than.
Space and baskets.
I agree. And we, you know, King Street obviously is a priority area. We might want to give some thought to where else we don't want to put them, given it's so expensive. Similar with Christmas lights, you know, 18,000 pounds to put them up and take them down four weeks later. Lot of money, isn't it?
I think people.
It's dingy now.
If you're trying to compete for people coming in and doing their shopping and stuff, you've got to have some Christmas lights on.
Right. Lights and baskets aside, can I have a proposer and a second to adopt the draft budget as written, please? Seeing as you don't want to make any changes, because I asked you. Somebody like to propose the budget?
I'm happy.
Dave? Would somebody like to second? Susie? All in favour? There you are, Alan, you've got your draft budget to feed into your numbers. You can, when somebody complains to me because amenities has gone up, I'll say, it's the budget Alan presented to us. We didn't ask for anything else, you know.
Lucky you, there's a recording.
Talking of expenses, move on. 492, funding of the fish parks. Thank you for the report that was circulated. We're being asked to approve an amount of £10,000 to finance the balance required for the fish pass from the open space reserve. That's a specific reserve that we have for open space management type stuff. And the decision is to note the additional funding of £50,000 for the fish pass and to recommend to full council that the project's budget be amended for the additional contribution. So the good news is, as you've seen in your report, is the town. So the good news is, as you've seen in your report, is that Town Clerk has managed to tentatively, I think it's probably the right word, uh, secure fifty thousand pounds from the E A to contribute to our costs for the fish pass. So we now have a situation where we've gone through a tendering procedure, we've selected a company, we know what the cost is. We've allocated fourteen thousand pounds from our reserves already. We've got fifty K allocate, potentially allocated from the E A, but we need to uh, make up the difference, which is an extra ten thousand pounds. We're being asked to, uh, agree to that ten thousand pounds and then that will go forward to full council. Is that where we're at? How do we feel about that?
Adored it.
Adored it?
Yeah, it's brilliant, isn't it?
Does anyone have any questions or you're all content?
Well, I mean, I, I was fairly pessimistic that we were going to be getting any money towards this and um largely based on what happened before, when we got to a situation where we thought we had money in the pot and then uh, it appeared that we basically all fell through it and so that was about eighteen months ago, wasn't it? And so for this fifty thousand pounds to be dangled in front of us is, um, cheered me up obviously really, because I, I didn't expect that to be happening and certainly didn't expect to hear this early on um, that, that that would be available. I mean, there is a, a bit of caution in, uh, what the clerk has said, possibly secured, but I think part of that is contingent on us coming up with that extra ten thousand pounds. Um, but I do have a bit of disappointment in that we had been asking, uh, E A for some time now for someone to, uh, attend at one of our meetings, kind of explain to us uh, the situation and the, the, uh, the details of, of the, the fish pass so that we have a, a wider perspective of, of what it means. And so far, we haven't really had that, that attendance from the E A. So I, I would like us to ask again, can we have someone from the E A, even if it was a Zoom attendance? Uh, so that we can just sort of chat with them about it. I'm certainly not going to say, oh, please don't give us ten thousand pounds. It would be lovely to have a little bit more breadth of knowledge on what's going on. Because, um, I mean, and do we have, we have to go to full council for this, do we? And, um, so it's not, it's not our part of money that we can resolve. So, so, and, and also the, um, there may be someone for council who may want to have a little bit more knowledge about some of the discussions here. So when we do go to full council, it'd be good to have that a bit of extra background.
Yes, sir.
I, I think, I, the apologies is more from the inability to actually get around. We've identified the person who we think would be appropriate to actually give that discussion. Uh, there's also been some other documents that have come out that also provide a lot more information. But really it's just a lack of management capacity. So I'll see if we can, uh, get something done.
Yeah.
This week, uh, see if we can organise it at this.
Because I mean, presumably it'll be the end of this month, so we're going, we're free to do it.
Yes.
So it'd be great to have that information out for the council. Great, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions or comments, please? Mike?
I, I suppose I will through Gritty's vote for this, but I don't like it. Um, there used to be a riverbank. There is then, then occurred a breach in the riverbank and we are paying for a very expensive way of replacing, of, of filling up the gap, a very expensive way. So we're proposing that we should pay twenty four thousand and that's if the actual contract comes in on budget. It didn't, presumably we'd have to pay the extra. And I can't stop comparing that with the, with the difference between the, um, that the committee's budget for last year and a committee's budget for this year, which is about thirty K. So we're spending nearly as much on the fish pass as we are on everything else put together, extra. I would be very concerned if the full council took the view, which they might, that will have the fish pass and pay that twenty four K, but will tell amenities that they've got to save thirty thousand on their budget. Um, I, I think we, I'd like to find a way of prioritising to say that some things are more important than others. I mean, I would put the toilets very high, for example. I'd certainly put the toilet tiles and the fish pass. So I don't want to be in a position where the council says, um, you can't know all that. I think we then have to go back and say, actually, maybe we need to put the fish pass into the mix if we have to make cuts.
Okay. Can I just, I think it'd be a good chance to ask, um, the, how do we describe it? The open space reserve, we're asking for ten thousand pounds from it. How much is in the open space reserve? And is it ring fenced so that if we wanted it for toilets or whatever, what's its purpose, the open space reserve?
It was really just to do projects, anything that we needed to do of a once-off nature in our open spaces. Um, it's a consolidation of a whole number of Ford Meadow ground. If you remember, in two thousand nineteen, we had forty eight, uh, different reserves. We consolidated that down to twenty four and the open spaces and amalgamation of a number of reserves, like say for Ford Meadow, for for Barn and Cross Common, it's just been put together in that way.
Okay, and the balance of that reserve at the moment?
Please don't go, we've got a recording, you won't be able to quote me, but I think it's about twenty four thousand pounds.
In total?
In total.
So almost half we're taking out for fish paths. Susie?
I would just like to say, although I, I take Mike's points on board, I, I think the fish pass is really important that we do that. I think, um, with climate change, global warming, whatever, that's not going to resolve itself unless we do something. And seeing a couple of years ago, those fish all dying because there wasn't enough water coming down past, you know, the back of there, I just think that was, I, I'd never want to repeat seeing that again. Uh, I think it's important for, that we do, you know, support this.
Thank you, Susan. Chris?
Yeah, I, I believe we should do it now. If we, if we wait a while, how much percentage is going to be further down the road? What sort of damage is it going to cause? We should do it now, when we can.
I think everyone's spoken all barbedages.
I mean, you know, you really have to consider what the impact is of not doing it and, and the potential of losing that fifty thousand pound. I mean, we were sort of all geared up to do it last year and then E A, E A sort of wears the funding. So for an investment of twenty four thousand pounds, supposed to getting an extra fifty thousand pound. You know, I think the impact of not doing it i- is too great, really.
I think it's good maths in my book, for every pound of ours, we're getting two pound of theirs. So I think the, the ratio is where it would be. My view has always been similarish to, to Mike's in that if we were asked to pay for a hundred percent of this, it wouldn't happen. We would have to go for a reduced option because seventy four thousand pounds to this council is a huge sum of money and we couldn't afford it. Um, if we stump up twenty four, which is, um, uh, fourteen more than we originally set aside, we set aside ten originally. There's more than I would have liked, but it does deal with the issue, uh, because the bank there is ours. We are the riparian owner of the bank. The breach has happened on our land, whether we like it or not. And the clock is ticking under our, uh, licence to get it sorted by next summer. So it's the only option we've got on the table. Um, so on that basis, I'm happy with the, uh, the ratio. Plus, given where we're at with inflation, that price is fresh. And if we agree to this now with the contractor, the price should be as quoted in the tendering procedure. If we delay even six months, it could be significantly more. So our percentage would go up accordingly or, or we'd have to pay the difference. Um, but I do think Dave's point about the briefing from the E A is really important because we're effectively being asked to spend twenty four thousand pounds of Fethford parishioners money. And we need to be clear on why we're doing that. One, from a public safety and health point of view, from, uh, the riverbank being in a dangerous position and, um, condition and flooding. Also from an environmental point of view, there's a good environmental reason to do this. Um, and it would improve the life of fish who I couldn't possibly name, but fish. Uh, and I'd like to know what fish we're improving and why. Might be trout, might be salmon, who knows? Um, but I do think I would want to be clear as a council as to why we're doing this. So that when somebody says to me, why are you doing this and spending our money and not upgrading a play area or whatever? Um, you know, so I think that sort of briefing, whether it's in person or a, a well-written document as to why a fish pass is needed, um, bearing in mind it's their specification we are using. It's their solution that they're giving us. We've just done all the work.
So they, their fifty percent, their fifty thousand pounds is not for repairing the bank. It's for improving the river so that fish can transit up the river. And if, if that, if we weren't using that design that allowed the fish to travel, then that fifty thousand pounds would be available.
Yeah, exactly.
So we can look upon it as we're, you know, it's costing us quite a lot to repair the bank, that's twenty.
Yeah.
The majority of it is actually making improvement for, for wildlife.
They're funding a fish pass that just happens to address the issue with.
Yes, that's right.
That's one way of looking at it. So, uh, decision required, uh, to note the additional funding of fifty K for the fish pass and to recommend to full council that the project's budget be amended for the additional contribution of ten thousand pounds for the fish pass. Can I have a proposer, please? Chris and a second up? Susie, all those in favour, please? That's unanimous.
Mike's going to just clean school.
He found up just the best.
Thank you all very much for your attendance and contributions and.
Moving on the fish pass, would it be time to have a minute's silence for Sean?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I did wonder if we'd be doing that at full council, but I'm quite happy to do it here as well.
So River Fingers, give him time.
Yeah.
You did both, full council and.
Yeah.
See, they opted, they opted you to attend, didn't they?
They did.
They did, and I think it's, um, well, I think it's, it is important to note, uh, that Sean Reddy has very, I'm sure everybody knows Sean Reddy has very sadly passed away. Um, he was very proactive in the River Group and I'm, I have some ideas that at the appropriate time I'll share with people about what we can do as a committee and a council to remember Sean and sort of appropriate memorial. Um, but I think a minute's silence would be appropriate, so. Do people like to stand? Okay, thank you very much. With that, meeting closed.